On behalf of the Town of Silver City, I'm calling this meeting of the Town Council to order. I'd like to invite you to join us in the Pledge of Allegiance and following that, the salute to the New Mexico State Flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I salute the flag of the state of New Mexico, the zealous symbol of perfect friendship among united cultures. I'd like to welcome everyone here tonight, including members of the press. I'd like to acknowledge town administration that's with us, our manager Alex Brown, assistant manager Jackie O'Leary, our city clerk Alfred Sodio, and our town attorney Charles Crote. We also have, representing the police chief tonight, Officer Howdy, welcome. We also have our fire marshal and our code enforcement officers here tonight, too. Thank you all for being with us. Councilor Ben Como will be joining us by telephone tonight. Next on the agenda is changes to the agenda. Does anyone have changes to the agenda? No changes. Next is Agenda Item Three, ceremonies, and there are none. Next is proclamations, and we have a proclamation recognizing New Mexico Bank Wild Wild West Rodeo. Is anyone here representing the rodeo committee? Then I will just read the proclamation. Whereas the Southwest Horsemen's Association and Caspabaca Rodeo Company will be presenting the first New Mexico Bank Wild Wild West Rodeo in Silver City, New Mexico, on June 6th and 7th. And whereas the Wild Wild West Pro Rodeo is celebrating its 33rd year in Silver City in 2025. And whereas cattle ranching was created by the earliest settles of the North American continent and has been a major contributor to the history, customs, culture, and romance of Grant County. Whereas the sport of rodeo petuates and keeps these qualities alive. Whereas the Wild Wild West Rodeo is one of our country's major tourist attractions, and spectators, tourists, and rodeo cowboys and cowgoers from throughout the west will converge in Silver City for this annual event. Now therefore, I Ken Ladner, Mayor of the Town of Silver City, Grant County, New Mexico, in view of the inherent value of this, do hereby proclaim the week of June 2nd through June 8th, 2025, as the first New Mexico Bank Wild Wild West Rodeo Week, and urge all citizens to attend and enjoy the rodeo. Next is Agenda Item Five, Council Comments, and first on the list tonight is Councilor Prince.
Your comments, please.
Next is Councilor Connaught.
Thank you, Mayor. First, I'd just like to thank Stephen Lindsay and Mary Stone and all of the committee that put on this year's 30th Annual Blues Fest. Those that attended seemed to enjoy it. It was a good weekend. I also want to invite people to the meeting tomorrow evening regarding HMS that is being held by several of the former providers. It's a community meeting where people can give their input and also learn about some of the concerns that some of the providers have. That meeting starts at 6:00 PM and it's at the convention center, the Veterans Memorial Conference and Business Center, whatever the name is. On Thursday, there's also a meeting there at the convention center at 5:30, and that's being put on by PNM, and it will address wildfire awareness and the prevention plan that they have. That should be interesting to see what kind of changes they made after they came here. I know we gave them some suggestions, I believe the county did as well, so it'll be interesting to see how they've worked those into what they're doing. And then I just wanted to remind people, if they're interested in being part of the Fourth of July, either by being part of the parade or having a booth at the park, they can reach out to the Chamber of Commerce. Also, their offices also at the convention center to register for that. And this year, they're going to have a very famous performer, and that's Ruben Ramos, one of the kings of Chicano music in New Mexico. He will be playing at the park, so the park is going to be extra full, so everyone look forward to that. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Ben Como.
Yes, sir. I just have a minute. I just wanted to congratulate the most recent graduates from Cobray High, Silver High School, and West Street, Mexico. Just wanted to congratulate them. Also wanted to congratulate, I think there was four or five recent promotions in the police department. I just wanted to congratulate them on their new responsibilities and promotions. And I believe that's it, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Snyder.
Thank you, Mayor. I was able to attend a meeting with Southwest Solid Waste Authority, Landfill, last week. The board consisted of members from Santa Clara, Bayard, Hurley, Silver City, Grant County, and Universal Way. The board members from the different communities were working well together to make the landfill operate more efficiently and to secure additional funding for the Southwest Solid Waste Authority. As an observer of the meeting of the Southwest Solid Waste Authority, the spirit of cooperation between the tri-city communities, Bayard, Santa Clara, Hurley, Silver City, and Grant County, will make the landfill operate efficiently and economically for the years to come.
Thank you. Next is Item Six, Approval of the Minutes of the regular meeting on May 13, 2025. Do I hear a motion? Councilor Prince.
Sir, Mayor, I'm going to approve minutes of a regular meeting on May 13, 2025.
Thank you. Is there a second? Councilor Snyder.
I second the motion.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor of approving the minutes, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Next on the agenda is public input, and two people signed up. First on the list is Bruce Ashburn.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Thank you very much for a minute to speak to you and everyone else that's joined us this evening. I wanted to take an opportunity to expound a little bit on Councilor Connaught's comments about the meeting on Thursday. It is true that PNM is going to be presenting on Thursday, but they reached out to Representative Terasis and Eddie Flores, the Grant County Commissioner, as well. This meeting is going to be all-inclusive now. There are going to be representatives from the BLM, from the forest, Gila National Forest. There's going to be other entities that are going to talk about insurance concerns. The representatives will be talking about their work in the legislature this year to try to help with those insurance concerns. There's going to be other people there to try to answer some questions, if you have direct questions for them. Again, this is going to be at the Grant County Veterans Memorial and Conference Center. Yes, I had to read that. I didn't remember it, so. There's going to be an opportunity to learn more about evacuation, handling, as I said, the insurance concerns, hardening your home. There's going to be an opportunity for a lot of information to pass from one to the other. There's no admission. Questions are absolutely welcome, and PNM is going to provide snacks and drinks, so please come spend a little bit of time, try to get as much information from this as possible, and let's try to keep our area safe. I think, I was talking a little bit before the meeting, we've already had five fires. We have been extremely fortunate to this point that we have some of the best firefighters in the nation working for us here, and they've been able to keep five fires under control knowing that all we have is a tinderbox right now. Anything in the wrong place at the wrong time could be devastating. So I'm asking for everyone to come, try to find what your little part of that piece of the pie could be, to try to keep us safe, and let's work together to make sure that these fires, if we have to have any more, don't get out of control. So, thank you for a couple of minutes.
Thank you. Next is Jim Charleston.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Thank you for letting me speak tonight. I've got a couple of things I'd just like to bring up.
Excuse me, could you pull the mic close to you?
So I just have a couple of things that I would like to bring up tonight. When I moved here a couple of years ago, I looked, I was pretty heavily involved in the film industry when I moved to Silver, and I reached out to see if I could contact the film liaison. I knew there was a film liaison for Silver City here in Grant County who has subsequently left for whatever reason. I recently applied at the New Mexico Film Commission to be the liaison here in Silver City, and they said that what I needed was the recommendation from someone in Silver City or Grant County. So I'm just kind of putting my name forth. If that's something that you think the town could benefit from, having a liaison here, then I'd like to put my name in the mix. The second thing I want to bring up is I am Executive Director of Silver City Theater, and we are planning to stage the play, The Last Angry Brown Hat, which is about the Brown Berets. And I understand that we have a lot of history with the Brown Berets here in Silver City. So one of the things, I've been talking with Javier Marufo at the Silver City Museum, and I thought it might be a good idea, it might be interesting and something for the community, if we had a community conversation on Chicano slash Mexican-American activism, past, present, and future in August prior to the play. And so any help that you could give me along those lines would be great in helping us bring that about, like maybe use of space or anything like that. So, that's it. Thank you so much for the time.
Thank you. Next is Agenda Item Eight, Reports. Mr. Brown?
I am. Reports today.
Okay, thank you. Next is Public Hearings, and there are none. Next is Unfinished Business, and there is none. Next is Agenda Item 11, New Business. Agenda Item 11A is the approval/disapproval of Resolution Number 2025-17, a resolution to notify the Grant County Clerk of all elective positions to be filled at the regular local election to be held on November 4th, 2025. Mr. Sodio.
Mayor, Council, yeah, this resolution is to notify the Secretary of State. All the municipalities have to send in a resolution for all the positions that will be available in November. I did give you all a calendar for those of you who are going to be running for reelection or for other office, and the timelines are all on there. So this has to get to the county clerk by June 7th, or actually the 9th because the 7th on a Saturday, so I need to get this to the county clerk so they can submit it to the Secretary of State. So the positions right now, the election is November the 4th, and the positions right now will be for Mayor, District 2, District 4, and Municipal Judge. And the filing date will be August the 26th, from 9:00 AM to 5:00 PM here at the Grant County Clerk's Office, and there is no filing fee for that. And then I will have some packets especially for the districts, so they'll know what districts they are, and some other information for you guys. That's all I have.
Thank you. Anybody have any questions or comments for Mr. Sodio? Then I'll entertain a motion. Councilor Prince.
Mayor. Councilor Ben Como has a question.
Okay, Councilor Ben Como.
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to approve Resolution Number 2025-17, a resolution to notify the Grant County Clerk of all elective positions to be filled at the regular local election to be held on November 4th, 2025.
Thank you. Is there a second? Councilor Prince.
Second, the motion is stated.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion or comments? Roll call, please, Mr. Sodio.
Councilor Ben Como.
Aye.
Councilor Prince.
Aye.
Councilor Snyder.
Aye.
Councilor Connaught.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Next is Agenda Item 11B, Approval/disapproval of Resolutions Number, Resolution Number 2025-18, proclaiming that extreme and severe drought conditions exist within the town and a limited ban on the sale and use of certain fireworks. Fire Marshal Vasquez?
Thank you, Mayor Ladner, Town Council, Town Silver City staff. This resolution was drafted and presented before the council and the mayor to kind of give a little insight to what we're going to be doing for this upcoming summer, especially that we do have Fourth of July coming up upon us. I do regret to inform, we're not able to do a complete full ban of fireworks as much as the community would like us to do. State law has it in place that we go before the council and have a discussion to make it, there's 30 days to talk about this resolution so we can limit the sale of certain fireworks as well as limit the use of fireworks to the average consumer. We're really asking for support on this, and it's not the ideal answer that the community wants at this time with the extreme drought conditions we are facing at this time. Hopefully, this will be something that we can work on for next year. Maybe the town can, I can work with the town council as well as the mayor to see what we can do is get with our town attorney and see what items we can have in place to make it more restrictive in order to better protect our community. So like, once again, this is just a resolution just limiting the sale of certain fireworks as well as the use of permissible fireworks for the public to be used. And on top of that, I do have the Stage Two fire restrictions to go with this. I don't know if that's okay to present to you at this time?
Sure.
Okay. So we're going to be entering Stage Two fire restrictions. I do apologize, I'm going to just read it briefly once again so we can better alert the public attendance as well as the council and staff. So, once again pursuant to Town Silver City Ordinance Number 18-24, Paragraph 9, Subparagraph 9, the Fire Chief, Deputy Chief of Fire Prevention, and the Town Silver City Council have declared that a state of fire emergency does presently exist. By orders of Fire Marshal, the following restrictions are in effect. A, no burn permits will be issued. B, no building or maintenance of campfires, charcoal grills, stove fires, underground fire pits, or other fires used for cooking or recreation. No open burning on town property or public trail systems. No burning to include the burning of yard waste, tree limbs, and weeds. Item E, you all approved pressurized gas grills with appropriate covers and lids are approved unless determined to be a hazard by an enforcement officer. Item F, outdoor smoking is prohibited except on a private residential property and otherwise in areas of barren dirt, pavement, concrete, or similar surfaces. Item G, no vehicle shall park on dry natural vegetation while running or after the engine exhausts or still hot. Item H, lighted matches, cigarettes, cigars, or other hot smoldering or burning objects shall not be discarded in such a manner that can cause ignition of combustible material. Item I, the sale and use of the following types of fireworks shall be prohibited. A, missile-type rockets. B, helicopters. C, aerial spinners. D, stick-type rockets. E, ground audible. And last item, J, ignition of any type of firework is limited to areas that are paved or barren that have a readily accessible source of water for use by the homeowner or the general public. Once again, these fire restrictions are effective immediately starting tomorrow, May 28, 2025, and shall remain in effect until conditions improve and will only be lifted by the Fire Marshal. Anyone contests this violation, order is subject to the following penalties. A fine of not less than $100, $100, and not more than 500, or imprisonment up to 30 days. So, with these Stage Two fire restrictions and this resolution, I think hopefully it would give more of a tools and leverage to keep our community safe and better educate our community out there to be safe for this summer 2025. Once again, my office is always open. I'm available, my phone, my telephone number, once again, is 575-519-8690 if anyone asks kind of questions. Town Council, Mayor Ladner, if you have any questions.
Any questions, comments, Councilor Connaught?
I just have a comment. I just want to reiterate to the public, if they think that these bans aren't strong enough, they need to reach out to our senator and our representative because it's the legislature that decides that we cannot ban every kind of firework. So, that's who needs to hear your complaints if you have some because they're the ones that can make a difference and can do something about it. Thanks.
Any other, Councilor Prince?
Actually, I have a question for Ms. O'Leary. For the fireworks vendors that we have that come through year over year, do they maintain licenses with Town Silver City, or do they just register as temporary or startup businesses for brief periods of time?
Mayor, Councilor Prince, they register whenever they come to the area, so they don't have a continuous business license as other businesses that have like a central location in town. They have to apply for a temporary one, a community development.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions?
Just ready to motion.
Thank you, Fire Marshal Vasquez, and we appreciate what you're doing and how you're coordinating the Fourth of July fireworks issues with the Fire Department because there's going to be violations. I know you can't be everywhere at all the time, but it happens, and so thank you for your preparations.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Ladner, Town Council.
Are you ready for the motion?
Yes, yes.
Okay. Mr. Mayor, I move to approve of Resolution Number 2025-18, proclaiming that extreme and severe drought conditions exist within the town and a limited ban on the sale and use of certain fireworks.
Thank you. Is there a second? Councilor Snyder.
I second the motion.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion or comments? Roll call, please, Mr. Sodio.
Councilor Ben Como.
Aye.
Councilor Prince.
Aye.
Councilor Snyder.
Aye.
Councilor Connaught.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Next is Agenda Item 11C, the mayor's reappointment to the Trails and Open Space Advisory Committee. We have received an application from Robert Shirovitz for reappointment to the Trails and Open Space Advisory Committee. He is recommended by the committee chair and by myself because of the tremendous amount of work that he does in maintaining and improving the trails and open spaces. If there are no objections, I would like to reappoint him. Any objections?
No.
Here are no objections. I hereby reappoint Robert Shirovitz to the Trails and Open Space Advisory Committee. We have also received an application from Miriam McDonald for reappointment to the Trails and Open Space Advisory Committee. She is recommended by the committee chair and by myself because of her experience and hard work on the Trails and Open Space Advisory Committee. If there are no objections, I would like to reappoint her. Here are no objections. I hereby appoint Miriam McDonald to the Trails and Open Space Advisory Committee. We have received an application to the Planning and Zoning Commission. David Stone has applied to serve on the commission. The Chair of the Planning and Zoning Commission, along with Vice Chair Commissioner Middlestad, have conducted extensive interviews with him. Chair Simon Wheaton Smith recommends that he be appointed to fill the commission position left vacant by Joseph Kennedy. Mr. Stone is here tonight to answer any questions that any council member might have. Any questions? Mr. Stone, is that the microphone?
Thank you for having me.
Thank you, Mr. Stone. There's no questions. If there are no objections, I would like to appoint him to the Planning and Zoning Commission. Any objections? Here are no objections. I hereby appoint him to the Planning and Zoning Commission. Next on the agenda is Item 12, the approval/disapproval of closed session pursuant to NMSA 1978, 10-15-1, H6, meetings subject to the attorney-client privilege pertaining to threatened or pending litigation in which the Silver City Museum is or may become a participant. Do I hear a motion?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilor Connaught.
I move to approve of a closed session pursuant to NMSA 1978, 10-15-1, H6, meetings subject to the attorney-client privilege pertaining to threatened or pending litigation in which the Silver City Museum is or may become a participant after a 10-minute recess.
Thank you. Do I hear a second? Councilor Prince.
Second, the motion is stated.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion or comments? Roll call, please, Mr. Sodio.
Councilor Ben Como.
Aye.
Councilor Prince.
Aye.
Councilor Snyder.
Aye.
Councilor Connaught.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. We will meet in the red room after a 10-minute courtesy break. We are back in session. Mr. Sodio, would you please conduct a roll call vote so that each council member can affirm that no matters other than those included in the motion to go into executive session were discussed?
Councilor Ben Como.
Aye.
Councilor Prince.
Aye.
Councilor Snyder.
Affirm.
Councilor Connaught.
Aye.
Thank you. The vote was unanimous. Each council member affirmed that no matters other than those included in the motion to go into executive session or discuss. Before we adjourn, Mr. Rocco had a conflict and was not able to be here to receive the proclamation on the Wild Wild West Pro Rodeo, and I checked with the attorney, and so we can present that to him now so that the press can get a picture. So if everybody would join me at the podium. [inaudible] Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. [inaudible] I could be a quick little follow-up from Alfred, okay? This concludes the business of the Town of Silver City. Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilor Prince?
I move to adjourn.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We are hereby, motion carries, we are hereby adjourned.